Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the town council meeting of October 15th. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Thank you and welcome. I was informed that we did have some difficulties with the system and I'm hoping that everyone at home is able to get this, so we're going to proceed as though everyone is getting it. The first, next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions on that? Anything to be set aside? Being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Public comments? At this time, is there anyone in the public? Being none? Policy agendas, we have none. Next item is public hearings. The first public hearing is amendments of the fees ordinance.
I make a motion we open a public hearing for the proposed amendments to the fees ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Thank you. We're now in public session for the fees ordinance. Is there any public that wish to speak? Being none?
I make a motion we close the public hearing for the proposed amendments to the fees ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Thank you. At this time, take a motion to amend the fees ordinance?
I make a motion the council accept the amendments to the fees ordinance as proposed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the fees ordinance as proposed. Is there any discussion by council?
Well, I guess after the last discussion we had in finance, I will bring up that one of the fees that was discussed was the sticker fees for the transfer station, which had a lot of discussion in the earlier infrastructure committee meeting. We decided to keep it at $10 where it is right now. We're going to bring that back this year so people will know for further discussion on different ways to handle the cost and the waste at the transfer station. So, I assume that'll be a topic for discussion this year for the council, so people keep their ears closed, take notice. That's going to be one of the items up for discussion.
Anyone else? Terry?
Dennis, you can remind me, didn't we put this on the services committee meeting, the next one, for the next services committee meeting?
I believe we did.
I remember that was an initial suggestion at somewhere, I don't know if it stayed in services or not.
We can, we can.
Sure, that's fine.
We can add it to the services agenda, November 13th.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
The, sorry, yes. The, just to reiterate what David said, there was some lengthy discussion on the sticker price. The proposal was to move it to $100 a sticker, which was unanimously, I believe unanimously, voted down by the council, at least in the majority. So, that stays at $10 for this year, but we're going to discuss actual cost of the transfer station and if there is any better way that we can actually handle all this for Hamden. Yet again, another complex situation that we're going to dig into pretty deeply, I would assume. So, nothing else was really out of the ordinary on the fees ordinance. It was pretty in line and reasonable.
Anyone else have anything? I have three or four, and please bear with me while we try to dive through these as questions come up. The first question would be, we are mandated, I believe, by state on dog licensing a price. Have we, have we looked at offering any different price by doing it online?
We're not allowed to set the price. That's set by statute, even if they do it online. The online process is a convenience, more so than for a cost savings. Just allows people to be able to do it at home when they can't make it in.
Okay. The second one I've got is under admin too. It's 1.6 on photocopies. When I first read this over and probably past years, I've looked at this and not thought much about it, but I quickly went down and came up with a, with a copy of ordinances and other copies that we do on there. And 1.5, .1 is up to 20 pages and there's 25 cents for the first page and 15 cents for each page thereafter. I don't think that that's an appropriate price. Doing some quick calculations over our staff that we have out there, if you, if you, if you take the four people that we have in there excluding Paula, but Paula is usually involved in a lot of that, so I will include her, we come out with 62 cents a minute of staff time. Now, I don't think that no matter how good Paula is or anyone else, they can run out there and make a photocopy for one minute. So, we always look at what are we charging, what are we doing? And I guess it comes down to philosophically, do we want to say it's a service for the community, therefore, we don't really care? Or do we want to say it should pay its way? Everyone, most everyone in this council, I said, is extremely concerned about the cost of things and where we're spending or where we're not spending monies. And, as I say, 63 cents a minute, regardless of how long you're there, adds up. So, I, I thought I'd bring this up to get, see how the, how the council felt about this as to whether it should be something that we should perhaps look at this and going up on it. Council Marble?
I was going to say something flip about Mr. Mayor. Do I have permission to speak to the mayor after, never mind. Conversation came out of our last committee meeting. I appreciate where you're headed and I think we should look at it. I would question the math, the 62 cents a minute, is that an aggregate of four people's salaries?
That's an aggregate of five people's salaries, their benefits, okay? A 40-hour a week.
Okay.
Okay?
Because only one at any time would be copying.
I came up with an aggregate of a cost per minute of any of them.
Okay. Not, not in the aggregate.
One, one may make, you know, $100 a week, one may make $50 a week. So, I put them together and divided them. That's how I came up with the aggregate.
And, and I would ask, because there are other considerations like elderly and fixed incomes that may need some photocopies and we need to be careful of that as well. I just wonder what the town staff thinks from their experience behind the counter on this.
From my experience, we don't do an exorbitant amount of photocopies and that the price that was set was based on, we can see how much it costs us per photocopy on our counter, on our photocopier. So, it's basically to cover the cost of the toner and the ink and not staff time, because you have to keep in mind, we offer notary services free to Hamden residents, which is a service. We spend a lot more time notarizing documents. We could notarize documents for a house closing and have to put our seal on 10 pages. And we have to read what we're notarizing. We have to know what we're, what we're signing our name to. So, I think our service for a notary fee in relation to the service of a photocopier, photocopy is different. I think, yes, we do, do make photocopies as a service, but we're only trying to recoup a little bit of that ink and toner.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
Counselor, if I might add, there are three different windows, front-facing counters, if you will, that provide service to the public that involve at some point in time a request for a copy of something. Most of us think about the front counter being the recipient of those requests. We do have a building and services office that also receives a lot of requests from developers and contractors to make copies of documents. I don't have a number. That's a limited staff, which has a different type of impact when that request is made. And we have a single staff person that provides counter services to the public when they come into the public safety center and they'll occasionally need a copy of something from police or fire. So, I would suggest that if, if the council wishes, we could do a little more extensive research beyond what the mayor has done on the other areas where this has perhaps more of an impact than, as, as the clerk mentioned, it's, it's not a significant impact to the front counter staff relative to some of the other services that they provide that take a lot more time.
I guess, to follow in with this, what's confusing about it is, I look at the police department and look at 4.1 and it says, "Report copies, accident or criminals," and you pay $10 for the first page and then 25 cents a page thereafter. So, is that, and obviously, it doesn't say stay mandated or anything, but here again, we're charging $10 for the first page and 25 cents per page thereafter, whereas, we're charging 25 cents a page out here for the first page and 15 cents thereafter. Is there, there's, Candy is the one who copies it, I'm sure if someone comes in and wants it. I don't believe her time is that much more than, than the gals out front time, so it's just things that I look down to, that there's impropriety on what we're doing. Counsel Wild?
Maybe some of the police station ones stem from the accident reports. Everybody has to pay for their accident reports now to get the information on the other person. The common charge is $10, although some of the communities have been moving up to $15.50 for the accident report. I think that's where you see, or why you see that for the police department, because it is being charged by every police department.
Many police departments.
The 62 cents per minute, I don't know, I mean, I can make 10 copies pretty darn fast, so I think you're ahead of the game by charging 25 cents a copy, to be honest with you.
Many police departments don't even process their own accident reports or incident reports, especially if it's a, if it's a vehicle accident. They go through Crash.com, which is through the state, and they are $10. So, I don't know if that's where we gauged our, that was prior to my knowledge.
Sometimes we have to get, as an insurance professional, sometimes we have to get copies directly from the police department, for example, if it's only an incident and it's less than $1,000. But the insurance world, you still have to have these police reports, so I think that's where you're getting that, because those ones are not up online, so. But there are, there is a need for some of these reports that only the police department can provide.
But a copy is a copy. Someone has, someone has to make a copy.
This is not comparing the same thing. This is not even close.
Okay. That answers my question then. I don't know where it is, but perhaps someone can explain it to me down the road. Dennis?
I think you're bringing up a good point, but I think the best response to it frankly isn't necessarily to discuss a change tonight about something that just went through a public hearing, but to ask town staff when they can to come back with, you know, this is what we're charging and why, and just some of the rationale, just so we can look at it.
Okay. That's what this is all about, we're doing it tonight. Yes, Shelby?
Didn't we just approve the library's fee structure for copies? Just a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was last week, because they put their fee structure in front and they added a copy.
No, we did meeting rooms.
That was for meeting space.
Meeting rooms, I believe.
Meeting rooms, okay. But wasn't there a copy, wasn't there copies on there as well?
I don't believe so, because they, you voted to approve the policy on, on renting the meeting room.
Okay.
And then, and then we added those fees to the fee schedule.
All right. I thought there was one about copies on there as well. I apologize.
The other one I have, and perhaps this is, I'm, I'm not clear on the language, but on Public Works, 5.11, which is Public Works Department Labor after 3:00 PM, it's $200 per person, up to four hours, and then it's $50 per person, per hour, for every hour I'm, I'm not really clear on that. Perhaps I'm getting a little, little too old and stupid for this, but I, I don't understand that wordage, verbiage, I should say. $200 per person, up to four hours, and then $50 per person after the four hours. Yes, Mark?
I'd be curious to know if they have a, a four-hour paid call-in type thing, call-in type.
I'm asking as a, as a language clarification on this, I guess, more than anything, because it doesn't say in here what it is, so.
I believe they have a minimum of four hours. That would, that would make sense.
That would make sense, Counselor, so, but I could certainly do the research and report back.
That's all I've got on it. Anyone else have, anything else? Yes, Terry?
Well, seeing as we just discussed this sort of in the services committee about enlightening the public and having more in-depth discussions about issues, I'm, I'm amazed that I didn't have to wait 15 minutes to find out that the cascade effect is real. So, are we going to continue to do this? I mean, is, we've already had a public hearing, we had this in a different committee, and now we sit here and debate whether or question things that we probably should have asked about quite some time ago.
It was, it was.
Just an observation.
It was brought to my attention that when we were doing it in the meeting, that this was the place where I was supposed to be doing it. After it went to public hearing, this is the place where we discussed it. And hence, that's why I brought it up.
Well.
Because things like, things like, for instance, the, the dump sticker, once we approved, once we approved the dump sticker, it's good for, until January of 19, or January of 20, before we can change it, simply because everyone buys a dump sticker the first of the year and they hold them for the whole year. So, that if we decided mid-year or sometime, April or May or something, we want to change it, we, it's, it's a, it's a problem, that everyone now has to come back in and get another dump sticker. So, if we went from, from, right now, we're leaving it at $10. If all of a sudden, we decided for budget purposes, then in April or May, we want to go to $50, everyone out there with a dump stick would have to come back in and pay more and get a different sticker. So, some of the, and, you know.
Well, I'm not debating the substance of the discussion or anything like that. I'm, I'm referring more to the process. If we were going to have this type of conversation about these fees and stuff, it seems to me it would have been more appropriate to have it during the public hearing portion of it than to have it now, because technically speaking, the council rules say that once a motion and a second has been made, the only conversations that take place are between the council members before the vote, not outside individuals. So, I'm just saying from a procedural standpoint, you know. Thank you.
I believe that, that once it comes out of public hearing and it comes to the council, that you make a motion to second, and then the council can discuss however they want, because this is now up for, it's gone through, it's now up for approval, yea or nay, the way it sets. So, if we don't have an opportunity now to discuss things that we want to change, then in fact, here it is, it's approved, until we either bring back a piece of it and change it, which we can at any time, or it sets for another year until it's mandatory that we look at it again. David?
Yeah. Ivan, did, did you have an alternative to that, that you wanted to throw a number in or what was the plan?
On?
Otherwise, we could just make a motion. On the photocopying, on your price, did you have something else you wanted to put in there for us to vote if we should change it?
Well, I've talked to, I've talked to a number of companies around or people who make photocopies like that, and most of them, most of them do a dollar a page. And I don't know if you go to Staples and go out there to get something copied, what you, what you pay?
55 cents.
55 cents a page. So, I, I brought it up because I, I looked at the cost we're involved in here and I, I definitely think that it should go up. But, but I brought it up for, for the council to, to discuss this. And if I had to, if I had to, to change it, then I would, I would change it to, to a dollar a page.
So, are you suggesting that you want to make a motion to approve the fee structure with the amended copyright of 50 cents per page?
We already, we already have a motion to approve the fee, fee structure, I believe.
I thought we just had a motion to go into a public hearing.
No, we came out of public hearing and we made a motion and seconded for this, so.
Then you'd have to remove your.
So, I'd have to amend it.
You'd have to amend your original motion.
Amend the, I did not make the original, but.
Well, whomever made the original, they need to have to.
No, anyone can make an amendment.
Take it back, or they would have to amend it.
Right. Withdraw or amend.
Right, but anyone can amend.
Correct.
Correct. So, yeah, that's, that's why I brought up. If I wasn't going to make that, if, if everyone jumped up and yelled and screamed and said, "No, no, no," we, the, the philosophy is, it's like the dump sticker, is, you know, are we doing it to cover cost or are we doing it as a service to the community? And if the council feels as though it's a service to the community, it's not that widespread, we don't do that much, we really don't care, if it costs us an extra $100 a year, it's no big deal, then I would certainly let it set. I wouldn't, I don't have a problem with it. But in my opinion, that, that if you're going to do that to where you cover your cost, then you've got to go up on your cost per page. Terry, David?
So, I guess my suggestion is, at this point, that we leave it the way it is, as a service to the citizens, and then that will give us time before the next year to do a little research on the planning and code end to see how much they really do for photocopying in other departments, and we can kind of keep a tally on where we're at really with how many photocopies we make. So, my suggestion is for now, we call it a service and continue on and revisit it again next year.
Yes, Terry?
Motion stands.
I'd like, just like some clarification, and I, I'm presuming I'm going to have to break the council rules to ask the town manager or Paula, are we talking about copies where someone comes in off the street and says, "Here, I need a copy of this," or are we talking about town-generated documents that are being copied?
Vote for us at the front counter.
Okay. Okay. So, people come in off the street and say, "I need a copy of this, could you make me a copy of it?" And we charge them 25 cents.
For the first page, 15 cents for additional pages.
Well, that, that puts us into a whole different, you know, dimension for me. I, I had no idea that we were providing copy services for just, you know, random copies as opposed to copies of documents that people were requesting from the town for some reason.
It's both. It's both. At the front counter, we do make photocopies of people's, you know, vehicle registration for.
Insurance cards.
Insurance cards, that sort of thing, documents that are in our possession.
Okay.
But we also have, as Dennis spoke to, we have elderly people that need to photo, photocopy something proving their light bill, so that they can send it to the state to get assistance of some sort. They don't have a photocopier in their home, so we make a photocopy for them and charge them the 25 cents. Doesn't happen very often in, in the front part of the office. What the land and building services do, I think, is solely town documents. They're not getting customers coming in off the street asking to make photocopies of something that they've brought in.
Thank you. Shelby?
I was just going to have to say that I think the level of minutia that we're getting into right now is a little overwhelming, even for me, and I think that we should call the question to approve the proposed fee structure as presented to the council.
Are you, you say we think we should, are you calling the question?
I am calling the question.
Okay. Question had been called. The motion is, we approve the fees ordinance as proposed. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next public hearing is proposed repeal of the outdoor wood boiler annual licensing ordinance.
I make a motion we open a public hearing for the proposed repeal of the outdoor wood boiler annual licensing ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to open the outdoor wood boiler annual licensing ordinance. All those in favor? Is unanimous? It's open to the public? Any public comments? Being none?
I make a motion we close the public hearing for the proposed repeal of the outdoor wood boiler annual licensing ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Can I get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to repeal the outdoor wood boiler licensing ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to repeal the outdoor wood boiler annual licensing ordinance? Is there any discussion? Yes?
I would just, go ahead, Steve.
Go ahead.
I would mention, just for public interest, that this is being replaced by state licensure standards, and that's the topic that came up in committee.
Thank you. Steve, did you have a comment?
I was going to bring up the same point, that it doesn't really absolve anybody from state regulations on outside wood burners, it's just a local ordinance that we're repealing.
Anyone else have any questions on it? Okay, being none. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Third public hearing is proposed amendments to the townways ordinance.
I make a motion we open a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the townways ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Unanimous? Public have any comments? Being none?
I make a motion we close the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the townways ordinance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Is unanimous? Thank you. Who would like to?
I make a motion the council accept the proposed amendments to the townways ordinance as written.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We accept the amendments. Is there any discussion? Yes?
Can someone just remind us exactly what the change is on this? Also for the public, so that they know what we're talking about.
Would you like to do that?
Certainly. The recommended changes to the townways ordinance deal with the addition of a section that addresses the weight limits on bridges in the town, on the townways, town roads that are controlled by the town and inspected by the state Department of Transportation to determine their adequacy for continued travel and up to a certain weight limit if there's any identified deficiencies. So, we're using the state statutes as a model for our ordinance and adding the language that gives us the ability to post signs on our bridges and any culverts that are part of a roadway that's considered a bridge by the state Department of Transportation. It allows our public works department to post those signs and then address any deficiencies that need to be addressed as a result of the state's mandate to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on this in the council? Yes, Dave?
Yeah, I guess I got a couple of questions. I see the mailing's already, got it down at the Manning Mill Road Bridge and the Sawyer Road will have a weight limit put on them, and this hasn't been approved yet. So, I think we're kind of getting the cat before the horse here.
This is a draft, sir.
Okay, well, I just, looks like what's going out, so. And it was my interpretation of the paperwork that we got from the state, the condition of the Manning Mill Bridge and the Sawyer Road was not, the state didn't give us any weight limits on those, they just told us there was some that the culvert needed to be replaced, because it was starting to deteriorate in places, but they didn't put any weight restrictions on it. In Manning Mill Bridge, they didn't put any weight restrictions. There was some minor repairs that needed to be upgraded. So, at this point, I don't know why we're concentrating on putting weight limits on them when the state hasn't said that we have a weight restriction necessary.
Right. Would you answer that, Jim?
The, the ordinance amendments that we're proposing don't specify weight limits for either of those two bridges. It just allows us to determine if those bridges should be posted, and if they should be posted at a particular weight, we would use the recommendations of the engineers to do that.
Well, so I know this is just a draft, but it says the Sawyer Road is being posted with a maximum weight limit of 27 tons. with a maximum weight limit of twenty-seven tons. Manning Mill Road is a limit of twenty-two tons, so somebody's already put a weight limit on that.
Yes, sir, we have been working with engineers and our council to determine what the recommended weight limits should be for those bridges because they have been identified by the state as being deficient.
But the state didn't tell us we had a weight limit?
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Questions, problems? Being none? All of those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Does it for public nominations, appointments, elections? We have none. Unfinished business, we have none. We'll move to new business. Referral to public hearing, proposed amendments to the Board of Appeals ordinance out of planning and development. Do you remember that, David? Or was it too long ago?
Yeah, it's just a motion to send to public hearing and the change is verbiage and the biggest thing was going from seven members to five. And that just wants to go to public hearing if anybody has any questions on that.
Super. I get a motion then?
I recommend we send the public hearing, the proposed amendments to the Board of Appeals ordinance.
Second.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this to send it out? Being none? All those in favor? Super. I assume that'll be November?
November fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Or nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Item B is referral to public hearing, proposed amendments to the general assistance ordinance.
I make a motion that we refer to public hearing, the proposed amendments to the GA ordinance. This is something we do on an annual basis as determined by the state.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Thank you. Assume that will be at the same night. The next item is request for authorization expenditure of seven thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars from Police Cruiser Reserve Fund. Came from Finance and Administration. Terry?
I make a motion, the council authorize the expenditure of seven thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars from the Police Cruiser Reserve account for the purpose of outfitting a new cruiser with equipment.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? For the public, the Public Safety Director, Joe Rogers, is here tonight and I was a little concerned about why we're spending this money, but we're taking equipment out of a, I believe, a Yukon and our new vehicle is a Ford Explorer. So therefore, physically, some of this equipment does not work and we had to buy new on it. Electronics, all the electronics works fine and that'll all be, just be shifted over. So, any other discussion? All of those in favor? Is unanimous? Super. Thank you. Next item is liquor license renewal for Pizza Gourmet.
I make a motion, the council approve the renewal for the liquor license for the Pizza Gourmet.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Council? Being none? All of those in favor? Thank you. The next item is a request for authorization with expenditures of thirty-four thousand dollars from Recreation Area Reserve for the purpose of awarding a contract to Plymouth Engineering. This came out of Services Committee. Dennis, would you like to start off with this?
I'll try to provide a little more information and ask my fellow counselors to chime in with anything I either miss or get wrong. But in essence, this is the latest step in a well more than one and a half year process of getting to the point where we have a design that will pass state specs to improve parking out near the Lower Hoyt Pool to allow the town to ultimately use the full range of recreational fields and facilities we have there. There was some confusion at the beginning of the last Services Committee meeting that I really think stemmed from the fact that we had a process initiated by a previous town manager and we're now working as a council and manager with a new town manager. And I don't say that as a criticism of the current town manager, it's just I think that was part of where we were a little bit confused about what an RFQ was. I don't think the town manager was confused. We had a meeting last week. There had been four firms that had submitted applications through this process. The town manager utilized a collaborative team staff review process to score these applications and according to consistent criteria, excuse me, Plymouth Engineering came out as number one. We secured a dollar amount of thirty-four thousand dollars for the contract to get this through permitting for stormwater to include the site we're on now, the post office as well, as the fields up by the pool. And with all of that said, I would make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of thirty-four thousand dollars from the Recreation Area Reserve for the purpose of awarding a contract to Plymouth Engineering to perform professional services to secure stormwater permitting for the Western Avenue municipal properties.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? The town manager, you have a...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just to add one comment, the RFQ has resulted in the award of this contract to do the permitting and concept design for some additional parking and all of the stormwater facilities that will be required by the Department of Environmental Protection to state level on the other properties that you mentioned, Counselor Marble. This thirty-four thousand dollar fee is the fee we'll pay to Plymouth to get us through that process. It's a comprehensive process. There will be additional fees. The cost of the permit itself to the state is ten thousand and five dollars and there'll be other potential permits. If we do an exit lane, there'll be some DOT permitting. So there'll be some additional costs above and beyond this, but this fee is what we'll pay to Plymouth to do all of the work to get us those applications submitted.
And I'm under the impression, although we can't pinpoint this to the penny, but that we have sufficient funds already set aside and reserved for those additional fees.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Any other input into it? Anyone like to say? Being none? All of those in favor? All those opposed? One opposed. Thank you. The next item is committee reports. David, planning and development?
Yeah, one of the discussions was sending the public hearing the amendments to the Board of Appeals. The other was a discussion over Sucker Brook Compensation Fee Utilization Plan for Impaired Streams. It takes in the Sucker Brook watershed up in East Hampden and goes through our business park, crossed Old County Road, down, crossed 1A into the river. These fees are controlled by DEP. The town is in the process of setting up a plan, so we have to have it in place for any new construction for impervious soil to deal with the stormwater design. So, it's in the early stages. The town just needs to get that plan started and in place and that was one of the discussions and that was it.
Thank you. Counselor Marble, services?
Services Committee, in addition to the vote we just took, also supported staff efforts in writing a letter to Spectrum regarding non-compliance of franchise agreement terms. There are a lot of communities that are expressing the same opinion and the idea is to work together rather than to just be one voice and not support others. We were presented with a pretty lengthy list of maintenance concerns at the Skiin Center that the town manager will take with him in his initial meeting with the owner at Skiin. It was mostly just an update for the council at that point in the committee, was not brought for specific action. And we had on the agenda continued discussion about Vafiatus Landing, but the citizen who's representing the land trust was unable to attend the meeting, so it will be back on the agenda for next month's meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Cormier, have we had a...
We have not. It's next Monday.
Okay. Counselor McAvoy, you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add. We hashed out everything that we took, that we did in the admin, finance and admin except for the discussion we had about council rules and it was just as boring this time as it was last time, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Managers' report?
Mayor and counselors, you have before you my report for this month, this meeting, just for the benefit of the public, I'll acknowledge that the Trade Wins Grand Opening took place this past Friday. Chuck Lawrence was there welcoming customers and he's ecstatic about being here in Hampden and we want to thank him for coming and bringing that facility to Hampden and acknowledge that he and all the businesses that provide services to our residents and visitors are appreciated. The town staff dealt with the taxpayers, the tax revenue deadline of October 3rd, that's always a big day at the town office, and we appreciate the staff's efforts to deal as expeditiously as they did with all of the visitors who are coming in to pay their tax bills. We thank the public for paying them on time. The municipal building mold remediation project has come to a conclusion. Final work is just some simple cosmetic stuff that's gonna be done on Wednesday and I just wanted to acknowledge again the hard work that was done by Sean Courier, our Public Works Director to oversee this project and the staff, Paula, Tammy, Barbara, the folks out in the front office, did a lot of work with records downstairs, Kyle helped with that as well. But I also want to mention that this project prompted the fire department to take advantage of the need to pull out all the carpeting in their bunk rooms and office space and they painted all the walls and hallway and everything and they did all that on their off time and that was appreciated. And then lastly, the Hampden Highlights Newsletter, the counselors have the final draft in front of you. We've already identified a couple of edits that we'll make to the final version before it's posted online, but that will be coming to all the residents in the mail. It'll be mailed on the 29th of October, so you'll expect to see it in your mailbox that first week in November and it has some information with regards to the upcoming election, the referendum questions that will be on there and some interesting information about some events that were held at the pool and rec programming. And it also does have some information about the bridge limits that we're gonna be letting folks know about as a result of the ordinance and also the work that we're gonna be doing to fix those bridges is part of one of the referendum questions that we're asking for borrowing authorization for. Any questions about my report?
Counselor Marble?
Just with the tempted humor, town manager, you may want to look for a newer picture that you could put in the highlights so the Wright State flag is near you.
Okay.
Go to counselors' comments. Counselor Rider?
No comment.
Counselor Wright?
No comment.
Counselor Marble?
No comment.
Counselor Wild?
No comment.
Counselor Cormier?
No comment.
Counselor McAvoy?
Well, I do and I, I was gonna give my standard, you know, shop local and buy American and good night Hampden, you know, which I always offer, however, upon, you know, looking at the town charter, I'm thinking that the ordinance or the change to the proposed amendments to the Board of Appeals ordinance is, may or may not be controlled by the, by the town charter, not simply by ordinance. So I guess we can have this discussion some other time, but I just, you know, so, good night Hampden, we'll figure it out.
My only comments are, the council meeting of the fifth, we will not be having, we're only gonna have one council meeting that month, that'll be the nineteenth. And also, counselors, before you leave tonight, we have papers here for you to sign, so please stop by and sign those. And with that, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.